For Thursday, September 3rd, 2015 at 6:00 PM. And like roll call.
Commissioner Doon.
Here.
Commissioner Camerado.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Holes.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Wols.
Here.
Commissioner Burge.
Here.
Assistant City Attorney Joe Ivey.
Here.
City Planner Armando Lozano.
Here. Alright, public comment now. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for general public comment, and is limited to no more than three minutes for each commentator. Does anybody would like to speak publicly? Okay, nope, so we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve as submitted.
Second.
We have first and second. Any discussion? Okay, call to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, passes. Now, approval of the minutes.
Move to approve as submitted.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, and we'll have some abstains here, but any more discussion? Well, that's okay, we'll ask for the people that were abstentions.
I'd like to abstain since I wasn't here.
I'd like to abstain also.
I'd like to abstain and apologize for missing the meeting.
So we'll call back to the vote for all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There were noted the abstention. Okay. So now we'll move to announcements and committee reports.
In terms of announcements, the, I wanted to let the planning commissioner know that on August 28th, the City Council approved the ordinance adopting the revised zoning code, zoning code. As you know, it had been in progress for a long time, well over two years, and it was approved finally on August 28th. There were two aspects or two provisions in it that were removed and will be brought back as separate items. One of those was the urban agriculture provision that includes the, you know, the section that allows for the keeping of chickens and apiary uses. And then the second was the prohibited practice non-domestic animals, which includes the feral cat prohibition. So, those will come back as separate ordinances to be considered on each on its own merits by the City Council. There will be a first reading of those ordinances on September 28th, and then the public, second reading and public hearing is anticipated to occur on October 12th. The second item announcement is, has to do with just as follow-up with, on the presentation that Karen Melby did last week on the start of the comprehensive plan update. We are looking to hire a consulting firm to assist us with the public, participation and public input aspects of that. We went out on RFP, we had a lot of responses, we've interviewed a number of firms, and we were trying to finalize a choice, and we hope to have that consultant recommendation to City Council on September 28th.
Thank you, Armando. Okay, we'll move on to now to informational items.
I don't, I don't have any.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Camerado, I already apologized, I'd like to add my apologies. I was in town, had it on my calendar, did all the prep work, and then entirely spaced it. So to the applicants and the staff, I apologize.
Thank you, Commissioner Wols. So we'll now move to the public hearing items. We'll start with PCN 15029, consideration of possible action for a site of .4 acres in size located at 1040 El Rancho Drive. Karen Melby presenting.
Good evening, Karen Melby, Senior Planner. Whoops. Before you tonight are two requests. The first one is a master plan amendment, and the second one is a rezoning on its, two properties approximately .4, totaling .4 acres at 1040 El Rancho Drive. Right here is El Rancho Drive. This would be Audi Boulevard up here, so it's just south of Audi. It's these two parcels right here. This request for this master plan amendment pertains to the two properties. The northern parcel is currently used as a parking lot for the office building. The southern parcel is where the office building is located. The applicant is requesting to add these parcels to the TOD district in order to allow for greater flexibility in the permitted uses. There was a neighborhood meeting that was held on July 29th. There were three people that attended. They had questions but no concerns that were expressed at the public, at the neighborhood meeting. The proposed master man, plan amendment complies with the regional plan since the property is located in Sparks TMSA and is an existing building. As I stated earlier, this request is to allow new use opportunities on this property so that they can lease it. It's right now a vacant office building. They are requesting to go from MDR to, let me bring it up, to be brought into the TOD area. You can see that they are just, the TOD area is just south of them, so they want to be brought into the TOD area. The master plan amendment supports the goals by allowing the applicant broader permitted uses for the property. The site is located in an area of mixed residential types, and also, the blank over here is the city of Reno, and that's the, I think it's called Paradise or Park. The mixed residential designation is consistent with the surrounding developments and provides a transition between the park to the west and the commercial uses that are located along Audi Boulevard. The other application before you tonight is a rezoning, and this request is to go from professional office, you can see that these are isolated, to professional office properties. And what they are asking to change the property to, well, they're requesting to change it to TOD. However, with the adoption of our new zoning code in August, it would actually be now changed to MUD, which is Mixed Use District. So, when I write the ordinance for City Council on this, we will be making it MUD and not TOD, but they're interchangeable. That concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Karen, oh, go ahead. Yes, Karen, can you? I drove by there, and I want to make sure that I'm understanding. What's the significance of the triangular piece marked PF?
That is, it's either well or pump station or something like that. I think it's owned by Trucky Meadows Water Authority, I believe.
Okay.
So I think it's a well site.
So why is it marked on our map? Does it, does it have some significance that we need to be aware of?
I don't know why the, you could probably ask Ken Crater, he made the maps.
Okay.
But, yeah, he was just identifying what the uses were in the area.
So PF would be public facility.
Yeah, it's public facilities. So a well from, that would be a public facility use.
Alright, thank you.
Uh huh.
Any more questions for this moment? Is the applicant here who would like to speak?
Good evening. Thank you, and for the record, my name is Ken Crater, representing the owner and applicant on this project. And we support the staff's presentation, staff report, the significance of the triangular parcel, simply the fact that it's owned by Sierra Pacific Power Company, NV Energy, and it's actually a substation and an old well from the days of Westpac Utilities, when NV Energy still owned the water utility company. So just highlighting the fact that you have that use there, that's all. But we agree with the staff report, and I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. This is a public hearing item. Is any applicant in the public that would like to come up and speak? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close public hearing item, bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, there'll be two motions on this, too.
Right. I moved forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for certification of a master plan amendment for PCN 15029, based on the findings MP1 through MP4, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes, and entertain a second motion.
I'll make the second motion. I moved forward a recommendation of approval to City Council for the rezoning associated with PCN 15029, based on findings Z1 through Z3, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Okay, call for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes. Good luck, guys. Yeah, good luck with your project. Okay, now we'll move on to PCN 15034, consideration of possible action, special use permit to allow construction of a 226-unit apartment complex on Sparks Boulevard.
Ian Crittenden, senior planner, for the record. This is a-
Disc Boulevard.
Go ahead. Disc Boulevard, I'm sorry. This is a special use permit to allow the building of a 226-unit apartment complex. The zoning district over there is in a new urban district, a NUD zoning district, is in a planned development for the Galleria Shopping Center. In the, it was kind of, I remember when I was wording it in the staff report, it's kind of hard to explain, but their land use map calls out this area as, oh, RC, sorry, RCSO2, that's Retail Commercial Service Office 2. And that zoning district in their land use table allowed for by, through the process of a special use permit or a conditional use permit really at this point, kind of interchangeable titles, allows for multifamily housing. The developer at this point wants to move forward with that kind of use, and so they applied for the special use permit. Staff looked through this proposition and the site plans that they submitted, we went through some meetings and talked about those site plans, and we believe that this is a good use in that area. There is, they're planning on doing parking garages as well as surface parking, a very upscale apartment complex in the area with adding significant residential opportunities in that area. So staff recommended approval of this special use permit. And that's the end of my presentation, if you have any questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Can I make a comment first?
Go ahead.
I got this closed before we were going to do that, that I'd met with the developer and his representatives during this. Tom.
Okay, Ian, one thing that I really would have liked to see was a map.
Oh, wow.
Where exactly this was on Disc.
Did we not include that? Well, I do have maps.
And when I went up there, I live around by there, but I-
It's the vacant lot directly south of Costco.
There's a bunch of vacant lots.
Uh, yeah, we can do that.
I was also interested in the map, but maybe you can address it for, for a different reason, which is that most of Disc is, has median.
Strip. And so I wonder what is, what is proposed for egress and ingress?
Well, I believe-
I think once you see the map, you'll be able to see.
Yeah, and we-
Unfortunately, I saw it with the developer, so there are some already built out, isn't that area?
This is the, the map from the notice. There is, and I'll put that as well. So there's a location map to give you an idea of where it's at. Obviously, this is Disc here. This is, it's not really named, but that's kind of Galleria Parkway. Well, no, that is, that's Galleria Parkway there. And then, there's a, there's a little unnamed street that comes out of the parking lot right along the, that'd be the west side, so. So that's that location. Let me grab the site plan real quick.
And another thing, Ian, while you're going through that, see if you can find another site plan. Says the engineering division requesting a site distance analysis in order to verify that there is adequate visibility from the main entrance. Do we have that?
We don't have it yet, but it'll be part of the construction drawing, they'll have to supply that to-
Right. I'd like to make a point, I read that in the conditions, it says, that's one of the conditions of the project.
Yeah.
So you put it in the conditions.
Yeah. Here is the site plan of the project, and, see, how do we zoom this? So, this'll be a, I believe, and, correct me if I'm wrong, this is a left-in, left-out? Full movement, there, so there'll be some work done there in the median, if there's, here's the median, not come out there.
Can we have the applicant come up?
Let's, let's wait till we get the applicant. Sorry, sorry. Hold on. So, Tom, do you have a question for Ian, that typically dealing with staff on things before we get the applicant up here?
Well, no, just the site plan, I want to find out where exactly it is, so I can kind of get a bearing on it.
Sure. Okay. Is the applicant here who would like to come up and speak?
Good evening, Commissioners, for the record, Angela Foose with CFA, representing Tanamara. So this is just a site plan to maybe give you a better overall picture. Costco is here, and the site is here, it's 10 acres. This is single family over here, this is all commercial over here. The fitness center is down here. Fitness Connection. If that gives you a better gauge. And then here's a colored site plan. If you can zoom out. There we go. So to the north is Costco over here, Disc Drive is right here, and again, the single family development is over here.
Where is the road going in the Red Robin? That one right there?
So, from Disc Drive, you could take this little road here.
Okay.
And then if you keep going, Costco is up here. Sorry, my hand was, you probably couldn't see that.
See, that's kind of the information that we need when we're making these kind of decisions.
This one, maybe we can zoom in, actually calls out where Red Robin is, where Costco is, and what the site plan will look like.
Right there, yeah, there it is.
There we go. So just a couple of features maybe I can point out to you is, because Costco is directly north, we have put in the detached garages right here, and that really serves two purposes. One, it's a barrier, so a wall, a physical wall to separate Costco from this, this apartment complex, and two, it's to add more garages. And then on the east side, which is where we're going to have the residential, rather than putting buildings right up closer to the property line, we put parking, so it's more of a distance, more of a buffer between the existing single family. And those homes to the, to the property line is about 80 feet to the property line, and then it's about another 70 feet before the buildings are actually constructed. So there's a pretty big barrier right there, and again, the idea is to create more of a buffer. When you look at residential next to commercial, just from a land use perspective, it makes sense to have single family next to a multifamily and next to a commercial. So this kind of ties in with the whole development.
Can you deal with the in and out issues that we, that we made reference to?
Yeah, this is, right down here is Disc, and that's a full turn movement, so you'll be able to go right or left out of there now.
Is, is there a median there now that will be cut, or is there no median?
It's open now.
It's open now.
Mm-hmm.
I'd forgotten where the median stopped.
Yeah, and you don't notice it, because when you drive by, you know, we all see that turn. Sometimes I turn there thinking I'm going to Costco, but I'm not, it's just a dirt lot. But it is open and accessible now.
Right.
And the light is a little bit above that, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Up here. Galleria Parkway is where the light is.
Angela, how, how many stories are we looking at, and what kind of construction just, have we got that far yet on what's aesthetically they're going to look like?
Yeah, let me show you some pictures. So these are three stories, and they're going to range between one, two, and three-bedroom units. The majority of them are going to be two bedrooms. In terms of size, they're going to be about 900 square feet, we can zoom out again, sorry. About 900 square feet up to almost 1,400 square feet for the three-bedroom. And this gives you an idea. We tried to, again, tie into what the architecture looks like in that shopping center. This is all part of a handbook, and typically in a handbook, it calls out very specific requirements in terms of our articulation and colors, but there wasn't anything specific to multifamily. So we did not want this to look like a commercial center, but yet you wanted it to tie in. So we brought out the colors that match, you know, the shopping center that's already part of the handbook, and that's where this design pretty much came from. And it is a mix of colors, as you can see, there's, there's brick veneer, and there's stucco, the red roof, so it provides something that will complement what's already there.
Isn't the, the apartments or whatever they are north, it'd be northwest of Costco, and I forgot the names of them now, they're building new homes just to the north of those, the condos, condominiums?
Probably-
Yeah, yeah. Aren't they in the handbook?
Is that over in-
It was.
It was called Galleria Station.
Oh, okay, I thought all that was part of that.
They're building both additional condos and single-family homes even further north, so all of that is going on there.
Do you have any more questions for the applicant?
You did good.
I want to talk a little bit, because I know one of the things was a buffer between single family, and we discussed that. Did you have some other, you know, we've looked on other projects, and it looked like you worked between those two elevations.
Correct.
Do you have some of those, so we could look at those? And maybe explain that?
Here's a depiction of, again, the apartments that will be about 150 feet away. And then what the single family, and that's a two-story single family. And the way that the two-story homes, that pretty much the whole single family subdivision is, is that there is a big change in elevation, and that's all existing. So the property line is right here. So this is everything that's already there, this will be all new. And that gives you just more of a cross-section view of, if you were, you know, at the second story of this house, what you would see looking up.
Exactly. Thanks.
And one thing this does not show is the landscaping. So, of course, there'll be trees planted, they're going to start out, you know, small, this is Nevada, but at maturity, I think that will also help to really block any views between the two uses. And so we did take that into consideration when the landscape plan was put together.
Okay, any more questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. This is a public hearing item. If there's anybody from the public that would like to come up and speak, okay? Please come one at a time, and if I could ask the Commissioners to let them get their three minutes in, and then let the public hearing go all the way through, and we'll ask questions at the end of it. Thank you.
For the record, my name's William Scott White, I live in 4731 Woodthrus Lane, which is in the gallery, or in the preserve, directly below where this construction is meant to take place. Have certain, a number of concerns, one of which is that the developer has not proven in the past that they have taken into account the sightlines that they're talking about with the traffic patterns. My wife, this is very emotional for me, so if I get a little steamed up, I hope you understand. My wife was pulling out of the preserve, and due to the inadequate sightlines that were originally built into the preserve, she was in a horrendous accident which nearly cost her her life. So this is an issue for me, the developer has not proven in the past that he has taken into account these kinds of issues. The other, the other issue that really bothers me is that when we bought our house, we bought it new from Tanamara, we were told that there would be no multi-use housing in that area, that it was all going to be commercial. And so we bought it on the assumption that we would not have anybody moving in above us, looking down on us. That's the second issue. And the third issue that really bothers me is that as you drive by that area, and I hope that you will, you will notice that all the fill that's been laid in that area is unconsolidated. So when construction comes, if they are not going to remove all that unconsolidated fill and put in fill, they're going to have to do a lot of compaction to meet engineering standards, which I feel will create a large amount of dust, it'll probably create a large amount of damage. We are currently in the process of being involved in a class action suit against Tanamara because of the construction defects in some of the homes in that area. Our personal residence, the pad that it was built on, has cracked and raised up approximately three inches in the center of our living room, and I can only imagine that when they go in and start compacting all that unconsolidated fill, it's going to create those kinds of issues as well. The other issue is, and I don't think anybody ever addresses this, is what's going to happen to the value of our homes in that area. When all of a sudden you have single-family dwellings, and all of a sudden you're building multifamily residences above it, I feel that's probably going to decrease the value of our property. I mean, we took a hit as it was with the housing, when the housing bubble burst, and I feel this is probably going to create another slam on, on the property down below in the preserve. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
No, thank you very much. And if you have a chance, could you see the clerk, just fill out a piece of paper? Thank you very much. Yes, sir, come on down. Just state your name, and then after your, please fill out the paperwork.
For the record, I'm John Horn. I also live in, in the Galleria Preserve.
And I'm his wife, Janice Garraway.
And this is my wife. And we share the same concerns as Scott does, and the, the elevation map that she has shown earlier is a perfect site of the back, my backyard, which we haven't been provided with any planned sound wall, if there's going to be a retaining wall. That bench retaining wall coming down from the proposed construction site is at least 40 feet from the top down to my backyard. So we have safety concerns, issues as well.
We've also had kids in the past walking along the top of that wall. We have asked Tanamara and the Homeowners Association to complete the wrought iron fence, only a portion of it has been built, they have not done that. The other concerns we have are, again, compaction. Since we've been there, we've had to build a retaining wall to keep the mud from running down into our yard when we have rain.
That step, retaining wall that we have in the back of our house is boulders, in-place boulders all the way around. There's already been erosion in the area, bringing that material down from the top down into our backyards. We're also concerned about the traffic study. We haven't been provided with the traffic study, and there's been numerous accidents on Disc Drive, because there's a blind corner, if you will.
Such as, such as our neighbor had mentioned. The other thing I have concerns are, has a noise study been done?
No.
Of what?
Noise. Noise. So the visibility, the noise study. And the other thing Tanamara mentioned is they would put landscaping along the wall, along the setback. So far to date, they have not maintained any of the landscaping around the Galleria. They have dead plants.
So our thoughts are, they're going to continue, do, move into construction on this multifamily unit. That, that will never happen. So, we, that's a major concern of ours, if, if we're going to take over the, that property, they're going to sign it over to us, that part of the property, and then it'd be our responsibility to, but as it stands right now, that's going to be Tanamara's responsibility, and our question is, is how, how are they going to be able to get in there and do their job if new construction is taking place so close to that property line? And quite frankly, we're going to have headlights going into our upper stairs, master bedroom all night and all day in a multifamily unit setting. The, the privacy that we have now is, will be gone, not including, with addition of our property value, will, will plummet as it, as history dictates, you know, building the multifamily next to a single family. So these are our concerns, and we hope that you take them into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if you could put your fill out, your name, thank you. Anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Please come down. Please just state your name.
Good evening, I'm Terri Golish. I also live in the preserves with my husband and my teenage son. my teenage son. We just recently purchased over there, so we're very new. We just moved in April. And we live right on the Costco, right, our backyard is Costco. So, we live right on that retaining wall. One of my biggest concerns is the same things that were just mentioned, the retaining wall and the being compromised and maintained. I think that's a huge issue, is if that's going to create a barrier to be able, as it is, it's not, when we moved in, there were sprinklers that weren't working, and there are trees that aren't alive. And we've actually gone in there and fixed those things on our own, because we want to maintain that property and have it look, look nice. But we're, we're very concerned with the construction that would create obstacles there. And also, disc. I go out, I work at the university, and I go out every morning, and I leave early. So, I leave before traffic is really bad. And there isn't a light, there isn't, there's definitely a blind corner. It's very busy, and I just can't imagine more cars on that street as it is. It's, we're, we're running into another pyramid if we start doing that. And we just moved from up, way far up Pyramid. We lived 10 years. We built a home, and the traffic became so horrible. That's why we've moved our, relocated where we did. And we were told as well that that would only be commercial property. There is, we were concerned because there's condominiums that are next to us. They are very nice. They look very nice. But with condominiums on one side of us, and now the proposed apartment buildings on the other, I feel like our property value is going to plummet. And this was going to be our forever. My husband and I are planning on retiring in this home, and so this really breaks our heart. That's all I have. Do you have any questions? Yes.
Yes, yes. 15 minutes. You're in the homeowners association there?
Yes, we are.
So, homeowners association is maintaining landscaping and sprinklers?
That part is not part of the homeowners association. That is the Galleria. That belongs to the Galleria.
Okay. All right.
Good question, though.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Anybody else from the public that would like to speak?
Can I address the applicant?
Do I need to close it? Yep. Do I need to close the public hearing first?
Yeah.
Yep. Yep. No one else from the public would like to speak more? We'll close the public hearing.
How about if one of us asks you to come up and maybe respond to a couple of questions?
And I'll bring it back to the commission for any discussion. Would like to...
Yes, I'd like the applicant to maybe answer some questions, if you'd like to speak.
The applicant would like to return?
I don't know specifically what you want, but I'm sure we've all got a, a group of questions that were taken from some of the applicants. I don't know if you want to address something first before we specifically...
Specifically, if I may, for the record, my name is Craig Rowe, and I'm the developer. I'm also the developer of the Sparks Galleria Shopping Center. I'm also the developer of the Preserve that's below it. A couple, couple of things I'd like to address. Number one is, one of the, one of the gentlemen in the audience talked about a class-action suit. I would like to let everyone know that, that no one ever came to us to ask us to repair any of that, but suddenly we were, we were given a list. But anyhow, that's, that's, well, we plan on putting a fence along the top. It's going to be a wrought iron fence going along the top, so there will be protection from kids and things falling down. We're going to do, it's going to be a first-class project. It's tying into the, it's tying into the shopping center, as I think is, as they've already discussed. We have had a traffic study done on, 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 on the property. And so, you know, it, it, the other one, there was, there was a comment that when the house was sold, that we were, they were told that we, that there would never be anything.
Right.
I'm, I'm not aware of any discussions like that. Not, not from, you know, if a salesperson told somebody that, I don't, I, I can't control that. But that's, that was never, it was never intended there would never be. That's why we, when we developed it originally, and we, and we put the, put the, when we did the, the PUD, we put the provisions in there to allow us to have multifamily with the theory that we could possibly have multifamily on that site at some point in time.
May I ask you, who did your traffic study?
Also Legge.
Also Legge.
One of the conditions sort of make, makes reference, condition number three, site distance analysis?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if that or your consultant can answer this, but it asks for the applicant to submit a wet-stamped site distance analysis addressing access onto disc drive to the approval of the city engineer. Have you done that, or is that coming, going to be coming?
That's going to be coming.
Right.
It's a condition to us getting a building permit.
So, that, that's what specifically it's number three in the, of the tentative at, at this point, conditions for approval. So, that's one of the items you would have to do at this point.
Yes, sir.
Prior to this.
Yes, sir.
And item number eight on the conditions of approval is community amenities. Developer shall provide a minimum of six community amenities. I assume this might be inside the actual apartment complex as opposed to something that would have to do with the reason that these folks are here. But what kinds of amenities are those that might impact the Preserve?
That would impact it in a negative?
Positively or negatively.
Positive or negative? I don't know that any of them would, would, would impact them in any way, actually. I mean, we're, you know, we're putting, you know, we're going to have a clubhouse. We're going to have a, you know, we're going to have a pool. We're going to have a totlot area. We're going to have barbecues. We're going to have things of that nature. And you are correct, those are amenities that were designed for the apartment project. I mean, this is going to be a Class A apartment project, probably one of the nicest projects in, in, in the city. So, with respect to lowering values, I, I think candidly, this is going to be, this is not a, a down and dirty apartment project. This is going to be higher-end with higher-end tenants because of the, because of the cost and the rents.
Those are my two questions. Do you have some?
I guess specifically, we're looking at that hill again. So, I don't know, Craig, you'd like to speak on that, but more, more specifically, I'd like to look at it, or I don't know if Knutson or someone with that, since I did talk very specifically about that hill, and I want to see what's being done, what's, what's, what's been done. We seem to have comments that things are not being maintained, erosion. So, you know, I want to speak very specifically on that hill.
Well, the, the one thing I think is important to understand is that we sold the shopping center about two years ago. So, we do not own the shopping center currently. So, with respect to anything that's been done on the hill, on that property in, in recent years, if it hasn't been maintained, or if there's something that, that the current owner is doing, that, that's not, that's not of our doing. And if, if we take, if, if we develop it, obviously, we're going to improve it and keep it maintained properly.
So, it's, so I see different names of property owners, the Sparks Retail Association, is that who actually owns this? See, I see a difference in here in the application of developer versus property owner.
Yeah, yes, sir.
What are those two?
Well, we're, we're in contract to buy the property. We, we originally developed the property. We sold it about two years ago to a group out of Chicago, which is the Sparks, which is that entity that you mentioned.
That, I understand.
And now, we're back in, we're in escrow to acquire this property. So, we needed them to, because they currently own the property, we needed them to, to agree to allow for us to, you know, for the special use permit. So, that's, that's why they're on there. But we don't currently own that property.
So, let's go, so let's go back to hill. You want to say who you are?
Yeah. Craig Knutson, for the record, with Tanamera Construction. And with regards to the common area that is adjacent to the Preserve and to the Galleria, that sloped area is part of the master, master developer's management. So, all the parkways, disc drive, all the common area in the shopping center, and that rockery wall area, all, all to be maintained by the Sparks Galleria, the, the new owners of the shopping center. If there's anything that's deficient there, needs to be brought to their attention, and they need to address that. Along with the Preserve has their own homeowner association, and they maintain their onsite landscaping and pool and clubhouse and all the amenities that were built as part of the Preserve.
Okay. Can we go to the specifics then and look at that, that drawing that we, the elevation? Isn't that, or, or a map, something specific, so we can see which part we're all discussing and where, where people are having problems. So, I see now a third party actually owns this, not Tanamera.
Yeah.
Really?
A fourth?
Look at that paper.
The cross-section is really...
So, what?
Oh, you're trying to see this.
I'm trying to understand. I think we all trying to understand what's going on.
So, yeah, if you look at the property line, that's now where a portion of the, the wrought iron did get built, and then it was, the, the construction of that stopped. So, on that property line, to the right of that, or to the east, is got landscaping in between the walls and up on top. There's existing landscaping. The maintenance of that, again, is by the master association for the shopping center. And it's a common, I believe it's common with preserves, if I'm not mistaken. We will be landscaping on, on the other side of the property line to the west, also between our parking lot and the fence line. And that's all going to be gated. It's going to be access-controlled with gates, so that, you know, people can't just come and go through that property.
So, Craig, at the property line, are you planning on putting, or is that conditioned here of fences? What's going to be done?
Well, it'd be wrought iron fencing with landscaping, and that's, that's part of the handbook. It's actually, we still have to comply with the handbook requirements for the overall project. So, there's pretty extensive landscaping requirements on Galleria and on the Preserves project.
So, so existing below, as we're going down that hill, it has been landscaped. There were some questions whether it's being maintained, I believe is what our, what our question.
Yeah. And that's more related to the association, because that was turned over to Preserves and to the Gallery Association many years ago, so.
And, and that thing was terraced in rock, rockery walls?
Yeah, terraced in five-foot rockery walls, which is, you know, was approved. All this has to go through the city requirements and
Right.
Compaction testing and everything else. We have requirements with regards to dust control and construction times and things like that. That's all in our handbook and also a requirement of the city's sparks.
In the state.
Yeah.
In the state.
Yeah, NDP and all that.
Right, right, with the dust permit.
Right.
So, with the, would, any issues with the maintenance of that area to the east of the wall that you'll be creating?
Mm-hmm.
Is that a, is that, was that a written agreement as part of your sale to the, the commercial group?
Well, the, the commercial group took over our, they took over as a declarant, and they're, and, and they're responsible to maintain this landscaping. I think the landscaping that these people were referring to, like Craig said, is right on the top of the hill here, correct, Craig?
Yeah.
And...
On top of the hill, and I think down the walls. You know, that, that, there's a corridor through there between the commercial and the Preserve where the walls are located.
Okay. And I, and I know we're going to talk about separately, fill on top of it, existing fill. But going up that wall, you're saying, yeah, that was landscaped at one point?
Yeah, it was landscaped and turned over to both associations five, seven years ago.
And then there's some questions, like I say, would I be hearing some questions on whether it's being maintained properly?
Yeah. And it could be, candidly, it could be if it's coming down the hill where it's sloped, it could be, the, that could be the, the Preserves Association that's not maintaining it properly.
So, we don't know which...
We don't know. We're not, we're not sure as we sit here today whether or not it's the shopping center or it's the Preserve. But whatever it is, we'll find, I'm going to find out. And if it's not being maintained, I'm, I'm going to put some pressure on the association to make sure it's maintained. I was not aware of that personally.
Okay, that's...
And again, how many feet are you talking from your property line on the wall, from the Preserve side to the start of the buildings?
So, approximately 70 feet from our property line
70 feet.
To the apartments. And then approximately, I believe, 80 feet from the property line to the, the existing homes down in Preserve. And it's about, I think, a 30-foot drop.
And how much of that 70 feet between the wall and the beginnings of the building will be landscaped?
It varies. I believe it's anywhere from 10 to 15 feet.
This is the Preserves on this side, and the property line is where the, the green starts.
Right.
So, again, this is the 70-foot distance between the building and the property line. So, the landscape strip covers the entire side here of the parking lot.
And it will be 10 to 15 feet before you get to the parking lot?
That's an estimate, again.
Right. I think it's, yeah.
What's, poor Mary.
Off the top of my head, I was thinking it was about 10 feet, and then the parking lot, and then the building.
Again, there's also an, an upper portion that's already been landscaped, and I don't know about the maintenance, but there's probably another 10 to 15 feet of landscaping up on top of that wall.
Are the Preserve homes, do they go all the way up north? I mean, from there?
Yeah, behind Costco, yes.
And how far, what's the distance between the first home on the Preserve to the last? Do you have any idea approximately?
I don't, off the top of my head, no.
I mean, would it be the whole length of your building?
Oh, no. No. If, if you look at, does this show?
Oh, there we go, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it goes way down to here, from here to here.
I got you. It might be a suggestion. I don't know if you could do it. Maybe you could just plant extra trees.
Well, we will on our property.
Yeah.
We don't own the, the other property, but we will, between the fence and our, and our parking lot, we will plant more trees.
Because they're worried about the view, people looking down at that. If you plant a couple of extra more trees, that might help.
Well, that picture is up there. Can, can you point to where the runoff is, please?
I can't tell you where the physical runoff is. I mean, there's a storm rain system that gets picked up, but I'm not sure where the, the runoff is coming from. Is it coming from Costco?
What we were getting is some erosion that was specific for, can somebody maybe come up and point, point to it, if you don't mind?
And again, as part of this development, we'll pick up all that drainage that was, was up on that pad and directed to the storm rain system.
Again, can you say your name again?
John Horn.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. The erosion is taking place right, right at this here edge of the development. We'll take that back right here. And I, personally, I had to build a retaining wall in my backyard to stop mud from going into my backyard. Tanamera did not step up, not at all, after numerous calls, numerous letters. I don't trust them quite enough. So, the landscaping that they're talking about is at the top of the ridge, from, as it's being terraced down, it's eight-foot per terrace going down, approximately. The wrought iron fence is not going to stop anybody, kids, from getting off to our side of the, you know, the Preserve side. It, to me, accident waiting to happen unless, unless this is changed. So, as far as the, the erosion, this is a perfect example of where my house will sit in conjunction with a three-story home. The line of sight right into our living room, plant a tree. Kids are still going to get in between the trees, in between the wrought iron fence. That's, right now, only about five feet tall.
Can I ask him a question? I'm just kind of curious. Where, where is your house?
I live at, um, 20, about there.
Yeah. And you guys could discuss after this, would be great, if you could talk that. Thank you, John.
Thank you. That lets us know. Thanks.
Thank you, John.
So, okay. Well, let's go, the, the, the next point that was put is, is about uncontrolled fill on the top. And clearly, I saw that just driving around there. I see, it's been a problem we've seen on many projects here, as development hasn't been done for a few years. And we see, I mean, I see stockpiles of material. Obviously, could you tell us what you plan on doing that, how soon, what would, what would occur here?
Yeah, again, Craig Knutson. That is all, again, undocumented fill. Down below was documented. Wood Rogers has prepared a sole's report to mitigate that undocumented soil. Anything that's non-structural will be removed or used as landscape material. All the structural material will be utilized onsite and then graded out.
So, where's the undocumented that you're talking about?
It's the stockpile material.
It's, it's that stockpile itself, which we all see up there.
Yeah. So, that stockpile, uh, stockpile material will be compacted and, and utilized onsite, and any non-structural material will be removed from the site.
You, you've already done the geotechnical
Yes.
Report then. I, I see that's one of the conditions requiring a geotechnical report, but you've already done that. Number seven, item number seven.
Right. And with regards to the site distance comment that John had, had mentioned in the conditions of approval, that really has a lot to do with the landscaping. in the conditions of approval, that really has a lot to do with the landscaping. As part of the maintenance of the landscaping, both preserve and, and this intersection, which I've gone out and looked at, some of the bushes need to be trimmed back and cut back to where there's no site distance issues, or a traffic study, again, was done, site distance was done in the original development of the project, but that, over the years, the, the landscaping has grown up, and they need to probably trim that back.
Any more questions for the applicant?
I'm trying to go through all the comments here and see if I, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, it's set by state law and city.
Yeah, it's, it's in our handbook, cultural.
There was another question about lighting, let's say, and, and we discussed that, that lighting, they were worried, you know, I, I heard some comments here of this, people are driving around in, in the project and lights going down to the house, could you address that point?
Yeah, I don't, the only lighting that would be, would be from the buildings, not from the cars, the cars, I, I go deep over the top, yeah, so, from a, from a differential in elevation. But we're also required, as part of the city requirements, is a dark sky requirement, so, and we'll minimize any lighting on that, obviously, on that side of the, the project.
It's said, correct, Karen, there'd be, that it will be a requirement to not have a, that lighting of existing? Could you come up and explain that?
As part of the building permit, we require a photometric plan, which demonstrates that you have zero-foot candles at the property line.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Any more questions for the applicant here? Okay, I guess we could bring it back for a discussion, or we can have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I think this is going to be a good project, I really do, and one thing that Craig was talking about, he's going to be working with the gentleman back there to address some of these issues. He was saying, first if he heard about it, or it would have been probably addressed a long time ago, and I agree with him. Along with that, the traffic sightline, this is going to be a little bit further up west than the, than the preserves is now, so there's more of a straight shot looking up as you're driving, whereas you come around to the preserves and there is kind of a turn at the landscaping looking, not so good, and I, I don't know who owns that landscaping, but it could be trimmed up. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the special use permit associated with PCN 1504, 15034, adopting findings S1 through S6, and the facts supporting these findings are set forth in the staff report, subject to the conditions of approval 1 through 13 as listed in the staff report.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and any more discussion? Um, I, I would like to say, I'd like to see that the, the landscaping is maintained, I don't care who owns it, I'd like to see some, just cleaned up, maybe some arm twisting for whoever owns it to say, hey, look, let's make this look a lot better. I also live in that, also live in that area as well. I think apart, this is a, my personal opinion is a perfect place for, I live there, but I, I think it's a great place for multi-use. We have a gym across the street, we have a lot of restaurants, I think you can, a lot of walking capabilities. But I would like to, you know, I, when I hear erosion and I hear bad landscaping, and then people say, well, I don't own that, I don't know, and I understand that, but I'd like to see some more arm twisting to get it done, done a little better, so. So we have a, a motion and a second, any more discussion? So all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, motion passes. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Giving for you.
Thank you very much, Craig. If you could talk to John and then we'll go back, would be great. Okay, now move to general business, PCN 08011, request a pop flash for 19,500 next to TJ Maxx, Ian presenting.
Ian Crittenden for the record. Now, did you guys get the, the elevations, this one?
Yes.
Because I had extra copies of those that I could have handed out if you didn't. Um, I, I was hoping you had, but I just wanted to make sure. Okay, um. So, as you may or may not know, depending on how long you've been on Planning Commission, the, the Legends Plan Development required that elevations be approved by Planning Commission. And so there is a new building being proposed that will be to the west of the current target, TJ Maxx building. This building is going to house Petco and Payless? Payless Shoes, and so they've put together a packet to show you what the elevations will look like and, and for your approval. The staff reviewed these, they, they meet the handbook requirements and they meet the, the general city guidelines. The, the one slight caveat to that is when the TJ Maxx building was finished, they didn't use all of the, the articulation we would require normally because it was going to a butt another building, and why put all that on just to scrape it right back off? These two buildings don't come to a, they, they're not flush, they are, come together in a point. Can we switch over to this? Okay, so you can kind of see, they, they come to a point, and so this wall won't be refinished on the TJ Maxx side, and they're proposing a similar treatment of, of the, I guess it'd be the east side of this new building. They're, they have wrapped those corners with, with, you know, additional, you know, facade treatments, but the, the bulk of those two walls that face essentially only each other will just be a kind of flat stucco wall. Staff reviewed this, looked at it, there won't be really an opportunity to see that from anywhere that's really public parking, that's really back behind those buildings is more of a staff parking area. Going around the roundabout and so forth, you'll see all of the nice, well-articulated, well-done facades, and so we didn't feel that, that, you know, the additional facade treatment would, would benefit and, and the lack of, it's not going to be a deficit to the project, the city as a whole or anything like that. So staff recommended approval of the proposed elevations. Send my report, if you have any questions for me. Oh, sorry, yes. Uh, there's a, a few of these, quite a few of them, in fact, I'll do this so I can see them a little bit better. You can see that the, this is the, the elevation that I actually face to the south, you know, very, very articulated, both vertically and horizontally, as well with color and texture, all those kind of things that we asked for in the facade treatments. This is the piece that will face kind of the roundabout to the west. Again, a lot of the different variations in the plane, the color and all those things. This, this is the wall that will be facing east, that will also face the other kind of blank wall, but like we said, you know, they, they, they only face each other, they're very, not very visible at all. And then this is the back of the building that faces the, the parking lot, so, you know, all of these faces, with the exception of the one that we've discussed, do a great job of, of working in the articulation, they match the, the, the general layout of the, of the, the complex and so forth.
Ian, it looks like it, that they're happy with this proposal, but-
Were, was the applicant constrained by the same kind of height limitation issues that we had with TJ Maxx and-
Oh, I was not aware of the height limitations associated with TJ Maxx.
The applicant's here, would you like to speak, sir? An overall update of the Legends project, I think, would be nice, too. Update?
Okay. Jeff McMahon, from Overland Park, Kansas, one of the partners of Red Development. We agree with everything Ian said, and, and I've been involved with the project since its inception, and I see a lot of familiar faces up here, so it's nice to see you again. The architecture is very much in keeping with all the other buildings. You know, we try to do that, but at the same time throw in some, some, something fresh, too, some new colors, some new materials. We do have the material palette that's approved in the PD book, and we tried to stick with that, but there, there are a few new colors on here that we're, we're glad to propose for the project. It, it does follow the, the, I should say, the basics, the fundamentals of our other buildings, where we're screening all the rooftop equipment. You don't see any exposed downspouts, any ladders on the outside of the building. And the, the docks are concealed as well. As you can see, there's a screen wall back there for the, for the retailer on the eastern side. The retailer on the west does not have a dock, so there's no screen there, so we feel pretty, pretty good that this building is in keeping with the architecture throughout the center. As far as building heights, these building heights reflect what is prototypical for that tenant. In, in this case, we have Petco, which is on the plan. The other one that we just announced tonight, I don't know if I'm going to get in trouble for announcing that, but we do have a signed deal with them, too, so, although we haven't announced it, but, yeah, so the building you're looking at here meets the prototypical heights of the steel on the inside of the space, and then what we do is, above the steel, we carry a parapet up high enough, we do a study to see, to be sure the top of the parapet goes to at least the top of the highest rooftop unit, and so that's how the, the heights are established. With that said, I don't have anything else to add, other than we're looking forward to build more buildings out at Legends and finish this off.
Excuse me, these elevations, the color schemes and the material used, the architects, or did you have input on?
I, I am an architect, and, and so I-
Explain.
Yeah.
I thought that it was, myself, I thought that it was very unique for the area, and yet much different, and I, I really, I really thought it was a great design.
Good, thank you. Yeah, we, like you say, if there's been a criticism of the architecture out there, it's just that it's such a big project that you don't want it to be mundane, and so as we continue to introduce these new buildings, we try to keep the materials to tie it back in, but try something new as well to keep it fresh. Was there a question about an update for the, the project?
Yes, Mr. Vols likes updates.
Okay. Well, the big picture updates is that the project is, is doing well. I think that's a sign of the health of the community. I'd like to say it's because things that we've done, but I think in reality, it's because your community seems to be getting healthier every day. I know our sales are as high as they've been, really, since the project's opened. Armando probably can confirm that, I see updates on the sales, and I, I know it's as high as it's been in the last five or six years, for sure. With that said, we've got a lot of interest from, for new tenants. There's always a turnover, and this project's been no different. We're going to be coming in soon with some new buildings along Sparks Boulevard. We're still looking at new tenants to go along the waterfront. There's been replacement of tenants throughout the, the project, and the ones that are there seem to be very healthy, so from our standpoint, the project's kind of really getting wind in its sails, and, you know, it's, it opened at a very difficult time, but we're, you know, we're pretty stubborn and we stick with it, and, and we're starting to see a really good project. Hopefully you all agree and you, you like the project.
Okay, any more questions for the applicant? I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion. I move to approve the building elevations for an approximately 19,500 square foot addition to the target backslash TJ Maxx building, Zone D, in fulfillment of the requirements set forth in the Legends at Sparks Marina Plan Development Handbook associated with PCN 08011.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, a call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. So, is that second, excuse me, the second tenant, is a shoe store? You didn't have to do that publicly.
No.
Uh, yeah, pardon me? What'd he say? So, aren't they already there?
No.
Oh, gotcha, okay. Oh, that'll be, I'm with my wife, the two of them, no, thank you, thank you.
So now move to public comment. Anybody from the public that would like to speak? I've seen none, I'll close public comment. Any comments for the commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have a comment. I'd like to make congratulations to the city's new ambassador for meeting with the mayor of Reno for a photo op, Art Spurber.
You're welcome, thank you.
I do, I just, I do have one to just, I'm, I'm, just getting his, just getting his feet on the ground and get going here.
I would have appreciated having the materials that were provided by the consultant for the apartment project as part of our packet.
Yeah, I didn't realize you could go in there, that's my fault, I didn't check that. I'll make sure that you get those drawn.
I seconded that, I had that written down as well, but I knew Doug would bring it up, so thank you, Commissioner Vols. Okay, any more comments from commissioners?
I move to adjourn.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night.